Before we begin the official part of our council, I'd like to do two things. One first is that we have some guests from our sister city in Russia, Hvarosk. And I'd like all of our fine guests to stand up so they can be introduced to the audience. Let's give them a round of applause. Please forgive me as I pronounce your names. The delegates include Mr. Vladimir Aleshko, who's head of the Hvarosk Municipal District, Ms. Svetlana Batalova, a teacher and consultant, Mr. Vladimir Ashinko, director of the Hvarosk Regional Department of Economics, and Ms. Oksana Popova, head of the Legal Oversight Department for the City Council, and Ms. Nina Polichka, director of the Far East Scientific Center for Self-Administration. The World Affairs Council of Oregon and the Portland-Hvarosk Sister City Association are working together to arrange a program focused on good government, transparency, and public input into the decision-making process. We're always happy to strengthen our relationships with our sister cities. We hope your visit to Portland would be both interesting and useful for the development of their region. They told me earlier that they'd just come from Seattle, and they were only in Portland for 20 minutes when they discovered that they liked Portland better than Seattle. So thank you for being here. Next, each Wednesday we begin our council meeting by asking the question, "How are the children?" And the reason we do that is because many communities around the world, when adults greet each other, instead of saying, "How are you?", they ask, "How are the children?" Because they know in villages that when the children are well, the village is well. And so we ask the same question to our community. And each week, we have some young experts come in and talk to us about these issues. And today's young experts are from Girls, Inc. And there's quite a few attendants. Could all of the girls from Girls, Inc., please stand up so we could see you and acknowledge you? Let's give them a round of applause. Go ahead and sit down. Girls, Inc. inspires girls to recognize their potential, honor their resiliency, and believe in themselves by providing school-based empowerment programs, assertiveness education, and community advocacy for girl-affirming policies and practices. They engage hundreds of female volunteers as facilitators, mentors, and community advocates who model solidarity and demonstrate the value of women and girls holding one another up to reach our limitless potential. This summer, Girls, Inc. launched a series of week-long summer camps, and this week's camp is called "Girls Can Change the World." I love that. It is designed for girls to learn about community service and the innumerable ways that they themselves can affect change in their communities. I'd like to invite four of the girls up: Katie Hogan, Shante Parker, Shaylee Smith, and Lauren Hestend. Now, they said there may be some alternatives. Lauren, is it? Are you one of the alternatives?
Yes.
Good. Okay, thank you for being here. When you speak, if you could speak into the microphone, that would be great. Thank you for being here, and why don't we start on this end with Lauren? And introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Lauren Rojas Sanders, and I'm here to talk about youth homelessness. And these are the three main points that I'd like to talk about is, when you are homeless, it makes it harder for you to be in school. When you are a homeless youth, it makes it harder for you to feel safe. And when you're a homeless youth, you have a lack of food and shelter. And my solutions to these problems are, we need to provide tutors that can help the homeless youth with schoolwork at homeless shelters and community centers. We need to find more adults to take care of homeless youth. We need more housing people can afford, and we also need more shelters and support services. And I feel that every day, people can contribute to help solve this problem by helping people of needs as much as possible. And how is it affecting me? I know people who have been homeless, and my dad works with people who are and have been homeless. It makes me very sad because I see every day that us and we have a luxurious life, and we don't see it like that, but they have nothing. And I hope I live today with you, knowing that every day, children of all ages are affected by homelessness.
Thank you, Lauren. Good job.
Mayor Potter, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lauren Hestend. I'm 11 years old, and I'm here to talk about graffiti, positive graffiti.
Microphone towards you. Great, thank you.
I have a personal experience. My father and my mother, every time we go around town and we stop, my brothers and I ask, "Why are we stopping?", like almost every three seconds. And they say, "My father picks up his camera and takes a picture of the graffiti." The graffiti around town is sometimes amazing and is sometimes disruptive. I know it's defacing public property, but we all know that sometimes it can be interesting and beautiful. And I have a reason how it can be dealt with. Number one, we can have areas around town that it can be used as graffiti spots. And the areas that are around town could be as in between alleys of bricks buildings and just on walls around Portland. Those could be areas for graffiti to be drawn and dealt. And I also found that graffiti is a way of some kids to express themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Good morning. My name is Katie, and Katie Hogan, and I'm here to talk about the youth rights of safety. Some kids, they've experienced bad things in their life about sexual abuse, and it's really sad, and they have really rough lives, and I've had experience with that. And sometimes when that's happening to you, they have a really rough life, and they have nothing to do. And so I was here to talk about that. I think that there should be more websites about those kinds of things, because I have family members who are put on there for no reason, and they haven't done anything bad about that, but they have looked on things on the computer, but it hasn't happened to anybody. And I think that's really disruptive, and there should be more things that can help kids who have been doing this, because it's really sad, and it's just really bad.
Thank you very much, Katie. That was very brave of you to come up here and say that.
Good morning, and thank you for this chance to speak today. I am here today to address the issues with the school system. I have three main points to discuss with you today. Number one is stability. Number two is quality of education. And number three, overcrowding. These issues, I feel, are being caused by schools being shut down. School closures are causing instability by having children shuffled around and causing unnecessary and stressful transitions. Intern children are not focusing on their studies, which leads to low-quality education. School closures have also caused overcrowding and inconsistency, which again contributes to low-quality education. Now we've covered stability, quality of education, and overcrowding. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. You did excellent. You really did. Thank you for being here, and thank all the girls that are here today. And I want the rest of the audience to know that these are our future leaders. Thank you. City Council will come to order. Carla, please call the roll.
Adams?
Here.
Leonard?
Here.
Saltzman?
Here.
Sten?
Potter?
Here.
I want to read this language into the proceedings. I'd like to remind folks that prior to offering public testimony to the City Council, a lobbyist must declare which lobbying entity he or she is authorized to represent. All right, let's begin with communications. Please read the first item.
Agenda item 994, request of Robert, oh, sorry, Randall Davis to address council regarding a petition to impeach the Bush administration.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Randy Davis, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to urge you and the council to pass the resolution to impeach President Bush and Vice President Cheney. I make a living with my hands, but this I know: if I come into this chamber, I have a duty to tell the truth. Honesty in the workplace is also required. George W. Bush was not honest with Congress and the American people when he made his case for war, nor was he honest about his secret domestic spy program. It is an impeachable high crime to provide false information to Congress. Yet on March 18, 2003, Bush sent a letter to Congress stating his reason for the Iraq War. It was to take, quote, "actions against those nations, organizations, or persons who planned, authorized, committed, or aided the terrorist attack that occurred on September 11, 2001." But later that same year in September, Bush admitted, "We've had no evidence that Saddam Hussein was involved with September the 11th." We now know, thanks to the Downing Street memo, that as the rest of us grieved on 9/11, Bush began to, quote, "fix the facts to suit the policy." The pre-war intelligence that led to the war wasn't flawed, it was fixed. The trillion-dollar cost of the Bush-Iraq adventure robs our city and other communities. As bridges are blown up and rebuilt in Baghdad, we struggle to repair infrastructure at home from Katrina. Federal funds have been shifted from community policing, and grant money for local crime prevention programs have been cut. We now know that prior to 9/11, Bush and Cheney had already started their domestic spy program in violation of the Fourth Amendment. And speaking of those who led us to war, John Dean, President Nixon's lawyer, recently stated, quote, "Today's right-wing cons are authoritarian fear-mongers, leading us to fascism." We have now lost 2,566 American soldiers. As we read the bloody stories from Iraq, we see an entire nation dying right in front of us. The blame for this carnage must be laid squarely at the feet of George W. Bush and Dick Cheney. The U.S. invasion of Iraq was ordered against the advice of the CIA, the State Department, and most U.S. military officers, and in defiance of the United Nations. The United States attacked and destroyed a nation that had never attacked us, which had no weapons of mass destruction and no connection to al-Qaeda. Strong evidence now suggests that the Bush administration launched an illegal war, lied to Congress, and spied on Americans without court approval. Please pass the resolution to impeach. Thank you.
Thank you. Please read the next item, Carla.
Item 995, request of Bruce Daley to address council regarding the Libertarian National Convention held in Portland.
Please read the next item.
Item 996, request of Robert Hill to address council regarding general government.
Mr. Hill, let me remind you that you're in the City Council, that you will not raise your voice, and that you have three minutes. Please state your name and then begin.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, who is absent, I believe, members of the council, staff, and honored guests, good morning and shalom. I am Mr. Robert Hill. I am here today on special visitation by special appearance. When I was here two weeks ago to talk about election reform and the charter review, I ended up rushing through it, and it's possible that not everybody clearly heard the message. I went back recently to the archived RealPlayer file on the Portland online website at about 20 minutes into the meeting and reviewed my commentary. I would like to start over again with my commentary on proportional representation in election systems, but before I do, I want to briefly talk about another topic. There is a homeless shelter called Rose Haven that has been predominantly funded by Catholic Services of Portland, and it has to move here within a few days because the building is being renovated. And my number is 503-294-2684. I'm not authorized to give the sister's phone number out. It's a cellphone, but Dennis Keenan is the director of social services there. The phone number to that organization is 503-231-4866. I spoke with Doug a few days ago, and if anyone has any knowledge of a new location for that facility to be moved into, it's not only a homeless shelter for families and women, but it is also a rehabilitation center. Also, I wish to concur with item 994, the impeachment petition by Mr. Randall Davis. We really need to get Bush and Cheney out of office. And the main topic, I guess I want to get to at the moment, is the item regarding my assault by police officers two weeks ago at about 10:00 a.m. I filed this morning a letter, and you should all have copies of this, not necessarily blue, of the letter I filed today with Chief Roseanne Sizer, and this is a public document. I also filed today a complaint with the Independent Police Review Division upstairs in that corner. It's normally not reviewable by the public, and that's a concern I have, that a true civilian review board should really have documents of sustained complaints that can be reviewed by the public, so the public knows what's going wrong with the police officers in the city. Just because a chief gets replaced once in a while doesn't mean that there's real reform in the city. Also today, in conjunction with the previous two documents, I have filed a claim for damages for $1,000, because I believe this assault caused me harm. It was a technical violation of an unlawful search, and that $1,000 is something that I believe is a reasonable compensation for the violation of my federal and state rights as guaranteed by the Constitution. Furthermore, if these offices are unwilling to provide copies of what I filed, I also filed today with the auditor in the clerk's office in the downstairs floor this notice of statements submitted for City Council submission today, and that concludes my time.
Please read the next item.
Item 997, request of Paul Phillips to address council regarding Portland Police.
I'm Paul Phillips, and this is not a complaint about the Portland Police, but rather a compliment to them. To begin with, I'm rather alarmed, more than just concerned about the Portland Police. Coin Six, I believe it was, reported three weeks ago or so, that 93 injured and disabled police officers. I also am alarmed. I asked two police officers, one specifically, the question if there was 1,000 policemen, with stating the fact that 93 are injured and disabled. And in the presence of this other police officer, he said that he kind of doubted it. I'm wondering if the public knows that apparently 1,000 police officers isn't 1,000 police officers, and that there's 93 that's injured and disabled. And of course, you can remember from May 24 that the City Council approved Resolution 694 borrowing $20 million for the Fire and Police Injury and Disability Fund. That was for the years of 2000. That was for the years of 2006 and 2007, which basically $10 million per year for the next two years had to be borrowed, apparently, for the injured officers, injured and disabled officers. And no mention of the news ever reported the firemen, how many they had. And Rosie Sizemore, the chief of the city police, was saying last week on the news that the officer that was involved in the 82nd Eastport Mall shooting was injured some 18 months before. That guy ought to get a recommendation. She virtually was saying, commending him for his job performance. I've met some police officers. I don't see well enough to even know a policeman. I've got to walk up and ask them if they're police, basically, even when they're in a uniform. And all the ones I've met's been honest, fair, intelligent, and I guess my time's up. Thank you.
Is that the consent agenda?
That's the last.
I mean, communications, please read the consent agenda.
Do you want to pick up polls?
Pardon? Yes, do any, yes, do any commissioners wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Does any member of this audience wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Mr. Hill has submitted a request to pull all items from the consent agenda. I deny that request. As the presiding officer of this council, I deem those actions dilatory practices and refuse to allow it. Please call the vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Please read the, yeah, 950 time cert.
Item 998, authorize location, source, and criteria for use of one-time neighborhood association volunteer directors and officers insurance defense reserve to cover cost of attorney fees and initial court costs for neighborhood association officers and directors, and increase the fund total to $20,000.
Let's come forward, folks. This Neighborhood Legal Defense Fund provides a level of certainty for volunteer participation in Portland's neighborhood associations in an environment of increasing litigation in our society. Such uncertainty is counterproductive to the stated mission of only to enhance the quality of Portland's neighborhoods through community participation. The Legal Defense Fund will establish a fund that will be accessible to neighborhood association members to pay for initial attorney fees in the case of an association is sued for actions the organization's taken. We are appreciative of the many hours of research by neighborhood volunteers and coalition staff into insurance alternatives and defense fund administrative issues.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. This issue is a follow-up to last year's approval by council of establishing the Legal Defense Fund back about four years ago, I think now. Because of changes in the insurance industry, neighborhood associations, I'm sorry, my name is Amalia Lerkong, Director of the Office of Neighborhood Involvement. About four years ago, due to changes in the insurance industry, neighborhood association boards lost directors and officers' coverage through the neighborhood coalitions, leaving neighborhood association volunteers vulnerable to trivial lawsuits. And in the research that we did to try and figure out how to resolve this issue, we discovered that there is a Federal Volunteer Protection Act that exists that supports volunteers within the course of carrying out their duties as stated by the organization for which they work. However, in order to prove that a person is covered under the Federal Volunteer Protection Act when sued, they would have to go to court, and that costs money. And so this Legal Defense Fund was promised by Commissioner Leonard at the time to help neighborhood association volunteers cover those costs should something like that occur. Over the last year, since this fund has been established, we've worked with risk management, City Attorney's Office, and representatives from our coalitions to really look at the procedures and the processes to access these dollars, to maximize the dollars that we have, and to make sure that the money actually does what we all intended for it to do in the first place. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Seaver from Neighbors West Northwest to tell you about the process we undertook over the last year.
Hi, I'm Mark Seaver, 2939 Northwest Montarquort. Greetings, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to speak in particular about the reworking of Exhibit A, which is the process for how to request funds from this, from this reserve. First, I'd like to thank Leonard Gard of Southwest Neighborhoods and Ruth Svetor from the City Attorney's Office. They are not able to attend today, but they spent a great deal of time and put the majority of effort into this reworking. And I would also like to thank Amalia for her sticking with this for quite some time, and to thank you all for your support for volunteers by working on this project. The draft of Exhibit A is, generally organizes and clarifies the original Exhibit A from a year ago, but it does differ from the original in a few instances. These are that it defines eligibility, including a definition of directors and officers, which is expanded to include autonomous neighborhood committees, people who speak on behalf of the neighborhood. It also, and this is the main point, reduces the minimum or maximum allowable payment from $7,500 to $1,000. This was in line with the purpose of the original work, which was to assist in the dismissal of lawsuits from which volunteer is protected by the Federal Volunteer Act. It also allows for more individuals to benefit from the fund, and it addresses situations where a board or committee may be sued collectively. The new work also sets a time limit for filing a claim to six months from the time the suit is filed, and it also defines and requires a complete application, which includes affirmation by the applicant that he or she is eligible, a copy of the lawsuit, a pledge that funds will only be used for allowed purposes, and it also has other conditions that are required by the Federal Volunteer Act. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the Commissioners? Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you.
Is there a sign-up sheet for this?
We had one person sign up, Mr. Robert Hill.
Hill, you have one minute to make your point.
Pardon?
You have one minute to make your point.
I have a concern about this line, item 1002. It has an asterisk next to it, which indicates that it's an emergency measure, and I'm concerned what makes this an emergency.
Was this a consent item?
We are on 1002, extend the contract with Miller and Van Eden?
No.
I think that was a consent item.
Which item are we on?
We are on 998, the Neighborhood Association Volunteer Directors.
I'm sorry?
Good morning, I'm Sylvia Bogard. I'm the executive director for Southwest Neighborhoods. I'm just here this morning to say thank you. This has taken us a while to get here, but the neighborhood associations really appreciate your support for the neighborhood system, for their volunteer work, and I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you, Sylvia.
That's all who signed up.
Okay, this is an ordinance, not emergency, and it moves to a second reading. We are early for the 10:30 and the 10:45. Could we go to the regular agenda? And we have five emergency, six, actually, emergency votes this morning. No, wait a minute. Five emergency votes. Could you start with the first emergency vote, item 1019? Is the OMF staff here to discuss this vote?
1019, authorize agreement with Life Era Inc. to provide employee assistance program services to City of Portland employees.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Peggy Ennett, the city's benefit manager. I'm glad I anticipated the fact that you would move quickly through the first couple of items on your agenda. The first contract, and there are two that I am going to be discussing, the first is with Life Era, which provides the city's employee assistance program. And the second is a contract amendment that extends the city's agreement with Standard Insurance to provide life and long-term disability. The employee assistance program has been a component in the city's benefits package since the early 1990s. The program offers counseling services to employees as well as other types of support. It helps them deal with their day-to-day concerns as well as some critical life events that may happen, such as death in the family. In addition to the city providing the EAP program, two bureaus have specific employee assistance program coordinators, given the nature of their business, and that includes the Fire Bureau and the Police Bureau. The range of services that we presently offer is quite expansive. In addition to what one would expect to be the normal sort of counseling services, the kinds of things that are now available include services for employees who have an aging parent who lives in another part of the country that may need some senior services kinds of activities. Also includes activity, or an online health risk assessment that's available for employees to go on and do a confidential assessment of their health status. There is also information on the website that includes like a template for a will for those people who have not done that, and they can fill out the basic information and then take that to their own camp, or their own attorney to finalize the will. We've found that employees have been very surprised when they find the full range of services that are provided, and they particularly like the expansive nature of what is now available to them. This is a particularly valuable component, I think, in the, in the benefit package, and it certainly complements what we can do for employees who might have some stress or other kinds of critical events going on in their lives. And with that, I would urge your adoption of this contract.
Any questions, Commissioners?
On a different topic, how are, since you're here, how are things going on the, our efforts, our cooperative efforts, labor management efforts around reducing the cost impacts of healthcare to employees and to taxpayers?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Adams, I also anticipated I might get a question on this topic. The, we've completed a citywide employee survey, and the, we're using the results from that to develop the questions format for focus groups. And we're working with unions now to identify the participants in the focus groups. There's a survey out to the unions, asking them to identify the resources that they have available to assist us in the development of the wellness plan, and perhaps most critically in terms of this present stage, we had 84 applicants for the wellness coordinator position. And we have screened that down to 10.
How many?
We received 84 applications, which was really a number that was higher than I would have anticipated. We advertised in a National Health Promotion Journal, and we actually have some very qualified folks from throughout the country as a result. The screening process was ably assisted by Janet Woodside Gomez from the Fire Bureau, who oversees the Fire Bureau's wellness program. And Labor is going to be actively involved in the selection process in terms of identifying and helping us make a decision as to who that, that person will be. So I think we're making considerable, considerable progress. I think that we all know that the key to the success of the program is how we reach our employees and retirees, and it's very clear to Labor and ourselves that Labor plays a critical role in terms of helping us get people engaged in the process and what we come up with.
Are there questions, Commissioners?
I just, you mentioned the feature that they will help people with aging parents in other cities.
Correct.
That was interesting. Is that a new feature, or is this a?
That is a new feature, and it's surprising how many employees we have that actually use that. The, the services are really quite remarkable, and they provide us quite a listing of the kind of activities, and they actually have provided counseling for people who have been diagnosed with cancer, who have small children. And the question in that case is how do you explain cancer to a small child? We did a number of employee education sessions, and people were really very surprised at all the things that were available to them.
Carla, please call a roll.
I didn't have a sign-up sheet, but I don't know if there's anyone who'd like to. We have one person who'd like to speak to this.
This is your, your last time to speak today, so make the most of it.
Pardon?
See, this is the last time you're going to speak today, so.
Why?
You have one minute.
Why is it my last?
You just made that a ruling. That's sufficient.
On what basis? Can you explain your basis, Your Honor?
Would you like to be removed from the room again?
No, Your Honor, I'd like to know the basis of your decision.
Please, you're, take, give him one minute, and he will be clocked.
Is there a rational basis for that restriction on my speaking before the council?
Consider your actions dilatory, so please go ahead.
Dilatory? I don't understand, Your Honor.
Give him one minute, Carla.
I think it's unfair for you to do that, to restrict my ability to speak to the City Council, when I've barely had a chance to speak to any of these items.
Go ahead, start this timer, because you're, you're using your time.
None of these are posted on the website. I had to come this morning to get these, and there's an undue restriction on not, it's my right to speak to the City Council. If you're going to restrict my right, you're going to restrict everyone else's rights to speak to this. I think it's a bad idea to pass this bill today, even if it's a good ordinance or a good bill. For one thing, it has an emergency clause in it, and I'm not a fan of emergency clauses. It doesn't really say why it's going to have an undue and costly delay in providing benefit, benefits to the plan, to the plan participants in Section 2. It was just a simple declaration with no explanation of how that happens. Did somebody drop the ball? This is a bill sponsored by you, Mr. Mayor, it appears. Is this something that you were responsible for, making this be an emergency instead of a regular timed bill? The same thing with Bill 1020, line item 1020. And there are actually 18 emergency items and only 10 normal bills on today's agenda. Why is this city operating in emergency mode? Why are so many bills having to be emergencies with no explanation of why they're emergencies? Who is not running the city correctly? Is it you, or is it your staff?
Time's up. Let's call the vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Please read item 1020.
Extend contract with Standard Insurance Company for life and long-term disability insurance for eligible city employees for the period of July 1, 2006 through June 30, 2007.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a contract amendment that merely reflects the rates for 2006 and 2007. For the first three years of the contract we had with Standard for life and long-term disability, we had fixed rates, and for the fourth year, they review our experience and provide us rate adjustments. And what this amendment does is reflect the rate adjustments that were negotiated with Standard Insurance. As it turns out, we had good experience on the life side, and the rates went down. We had not-so-good experience on the long-term disability, and those rates did go up. And with that, I would urge your adoption of this contract amendment. Thank you.
Questions? Please call the vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
I'd like to move ahead to the next emergency vote, and I'm moving ahead because I have to leave at 11:30, and we require a minimum of four folks to vote on emergency. Please read item 1024.
Create the Portland Streetcar Lowell Extension Local Improvement District to assist in the capital financing to construct an extension, extension of the Portland Streetcar from Southwest Gibb Street to Southwest Lowell Street.
Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council consideration today, if approved, will authorize the start of construction of the Portland Streetcar Lowell Extension Project that will add about a half a mile or eight blocks to the city's streetcar system. It will run from the current terminus at Southwest Gibb Street, which is the tram to Lowell at the south end of South Waterfront District. Lowell is one block north of Southwest Bancroft, where the current location of the spaghetti factory is. The extension will let us better serve all the new development that is occurring in South Waterfront, the Merriweather condominiums people are moving in right now, and OHSU Center for Health and Healing, they're scheduled to move in mid-October. The John Ross and Atwater Place developments are under construction, and other projects under consideration include the Tramlo Crow and another project by Williams and Dames at Southwest Lowell. At Build Up, as the members of council know, this new neighborhood will have 3,000 to 5,000 housing units at many levels and about 10,000 jobs. The private investment, in addition to the public investment, is expected to be about $1.5 to $2 billion. It's important that we do this to handle the growth. It's important that we do this to handle the growth of not only the South Waterfront districts, but the South Waterfront is our investment in the central city and helps us maintain urban sprawl. The project cost is fourteen point four-five million.
Did you say maintain urban sprawl?
Sorry, contain urban sprawl. Contain urban sprawl. Thank you, Mayor.
Just slight clarification.
Yes.
Just to prove somebody's listening to you.
Yeah. Only one. Only one person in the whole room is listening to me. Thank you, Mayor, for being such a devoted fan of my testimony. The project will cost fourteen point four-five million and is funded in a variety of sources. We've included the sources of the funding as attachment A on the ordinance before you. And I'd like to thank the private property owners, which are putting up four point five million for the local improvement district. I'd like to thank the state and the governor for the Connect Oregon Grant. We have federal funding from HUD of about six hundred and forty-four million and a variety of other funds for PDOT from PDOT. So the extension, this extension sets up consideration of streetcar connection between South Waterfront through John's Landing and on to Lake Oswego. Vicki is here to answer any questions that, that you might have.
Questions from the commissioners? Is there a sign-up sheet?
Yes, we have, Mr. Mark Williams.
Mr. Williams.
I think he just stepped out.
He's had to leave.
Okay.
That, that was all, besides Mr. Hill.
Okay, please call a vote.
Adams?
Thank you, Vicki, and Carter McNichols, wherever you're at, Rick Guftisson, and everyone on staff working hard to move this forward. Aye.
Leonard?
Well, I appreciate the work Commissioner Adams brings to this project. I have had concerns in the past, but his diligence and seeing through particulars of this allows me to feel comfortable in voting aye.
Saltzman?
Very exciting, and please to vote aye.
Call blue.
Potter?
Aye.
Did you want to go through, even though it's not an emergency, this is the same. So go ahead and read item 1025.
Sorry, 1025, adopt the final capital finance plan for the Portland Streetcar Lowell Extension Project.
Questions from the commissioners? It's a resolution, please call, is there a sign-up sheet?
I had one altogether, if Mr. Williams didn't want to speak to this one, the resolution either. You can.
Wise judgment.
Please call a vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Please read item 1026.
Amend agreement with the Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon for funding assistance for the operation and maintenance of the Portland Streetcar System.
Questions from commissioners? Please call a vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Please read item 1027.
Amend contract with Stacy and Whitbeck, Inc. for construction of improvements for the Portland Streetcar Lowell Extension Project.
Questions? Call a vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Please read item 1028.
Amend agreement with Portland Streetcar, Inc. to provide project management and design support services during construction of the Portland Streetcar Lowell Extension Project.
Questions? Call a vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Saltzman, it's just-
Yeah, I think we have everybody here. Okay, get started. Well, we'll just start without her.
Okay. Could you please read the 10:30 time cert?
Add to item 999, donation by Freightliner to Portland Parks and Recreation.
Start with Saltzman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cover some music.
Thank you, Antonio, for the musical moment here at City Council.
That was beautiful.
Yes.
You can hear the Antonio Centurion Trio, August 5th, at the Washington Park Summer Festival at 6:00 PM in the Rose Garden Amphitheater. We wanted to set the mood in order to give a warm thanks to Freightliner for the $100,000 donation, making possible Portland Parks and Recreation's 2006 Washington Park Summer Festival. This is the second year in a row that Freightliner's generous donation has allowed parks to produce the festival that was lost nearly twenty years ago due to the city's inability to fund it on its own. So here with us today is Roger Nielsen, Chief Operating Officer for Freightliner. With him is Lisa Turpil, and if Zari Santner shows up, she'll come to the table too. But Lisa, would you like to say a few words on behalf of Portland Parks?
Thank you, I am Lisa Turpil, and I'm here to give my warm thanks to Freightliner for their second year's donation to our Washington Park Summer Festival and summer concerts. I think it show, it would demonstrate the gratitude of Portland to Freightliner for this donation. With a little vignette, there was a gentleman on the bus last year who had, who was sitting next to one of our employees from Portland Parks and Recreation, who's, who got to chatting with folks and said, found out that our staff person worked for Parks and Recreation, and he said that he was, had just that night before been up to Washington Park Summer Festival, this was last summer, and had enjoyed a wonderful picnic and concert under the stars, and he was leaning back on the blanket, and he was thinking to himself, it doesn't get better than this. Zari's here today, now, and I know she has a couple of words to say.
I'm sorry I'm late. Good morning, Zari Santner, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm very, very delighted to be here to acknowledge the contributions that the Freightliner groups had made to the city last year and fortunately this year. Many of you have attended summer concerts in parks, and this is a very well-loved summertime activities in our communities. And started, if you, if you read Parks Bureau's report, all the way back to 1908, you get really a lot of descriptions about summer concerts, musical concerts, performances, marching bands, that had occurred throughout the years and decades in parks. And the summer musical festival in Washington Park started in 1949 under the leadership of Theo Lynch, who was the Director of Recreation for Portland Parks. And this, this effort, under her guidance and leadership, has continued throughout the years and has become the model for summer concert series in, in parks. Over the years, neighborhood committees have taken the lead to raise funds and select artists and spread the word. And local businesses, small and large, have stepped up to sponsor concerts in nearby, nearby parks so that artists and technicians receive a reasonable fee for their work, and cost is no barrier for public enjoyment. When music is played in parks in summer evenings, and a park is filled with hundreds of people picnicking and dancing, toddlers, elders, and everyone in between, there is no room for activities that put a neighborhood in peril. And summer concerts in Portland parks stand as a testament to the power of arts and parks in fostering a sense of community. 2005 was a banner year, primarily because of the partnership with the Freightliner groups, and because of their generosity and their contributions, we were able to expand the concert series and participation by more than 25% in our parks. And most importantly, we were able to publicize these events through media and, and radio. Today, we have Roger Nielsen, who is the Chief Operating Officer of the Freightliner Group, which he would say a few words. And the purpose of our presentation today is just give the council an opportunity to join us in thanking the Freightliners for their contribution and for their generosity. And before I turn to Roger, I would like to read a quote from a musician who played in one of our parks last year. He said, and his name was Mark Bosnian, he said, "Cost of attending Portland Parks concert is zero dollars. The benefit it provides to the community is worth millions of dollars. And to be able to play zydeco in front of a sea of smiling faces and watch kids of all ages dance their interpretation of the Funky Monkey is absolutely priceless." So with that, I will turn to-
Thank you. Dan, Lisa, Zari, commissioners, Mayor Potter, thank you very much for the introduction and the kind remarks. As Dan mentioned, I'm Roger Nielsen, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Freightliner, and I'm delighted to be here today. I'm usually worried about plant production schedules and material costs, so you've given me quite a welcome relief from that pressure. You'll be glad to hear that we're having a banner year as well at Freightliner, and we have some very busy production schedules right now going on in Swan Island. Despite the press of business, we are pleased and proud to sponsor the Washington Park Summer Festival again this year, and like you, we are looking forward to many wonderful evenings in the park this August and an outstanding lineup of concerts. Much like the concert series, Freightliner has a long history here in Portland. For those of you who may not be familiar with our company, let me give you a real quick synopsis. Our founder, Leland James, opened a manufacturing facility in Portland in 1947 to build a better truck for the use of innovative lightweight materials. Fifty-nine years later, Freightliner is still proud to call Portland home. Our Portland head, our corporate headquarters and the Portland Manufacturing Plant are both located on Swan Island, along with more than 4,000 of our employees. We've grown quite a bit in recent years, and I'm pleased to note that Freightliner leads the North American market today for the building and selling of heavy and medium-duty trucks, with a total of 26,000 employees in the United States, Canada, and Mexico. We are also the leading North American producer of school buses and diesel-powered vehicles and chassis for the motorhome market and the walk-in van market. We have been an integral part and successful part of Daimler Chrysler since 1981, when then the company known as Daimler Benz purchased our company from Consolidated Freightways. You all know Daimler Chrysler from the automotive brands, especially Mercedes-Benz, Dodge, and Chrysler. You may not know that Daimler Chrysler is also the largest manufacturer of commercial vehicles in the entire world, more than twice our nearest competitor. And this has been highly beneficial to Freightliner over the years in terms of access to advanced engineering and research capabilities, among other competitive advantages. By the way, most of you have seen the Dr. Z commercials on TV. You may recall that Dieter Zetsche, who's currently the Chairman of Daimler Chrysler, was the President of Freightliner in the early 1990s. He and his family remember Portland fondly, and I highly doubt that his recent stint living in Detroit as Head of Freightliner, or Head of Chrysler compares favorably to living here in Portland. I met his children, and his children still call Portland home. This is home to them and always will be.
That's not, that's not an actor, then, on the-
That is not an actor. His mustache is real.
I want to thank you for that, Mr. Nielsen. I just want to bet with my wife on that.
Okay, with that bit of background, I'd like to close with a few comments on why the Washington Park Summer Festival sponsorship is important to us at Freightliner. Sponsorship opportunities are key decisions for companies like ours, and we're pleased that this one is such a great fit. Now, you might be wondering what truck manufacturing has to do with music. As one of Portland's largest employers, we believe that being an active community participant is an important and worthwhile goal. The well-attended and free concerts at Washington Park are a wonderful way for us to give back to the city at large. We also appreciate the cultural and ethnic diversity represented in the concert schedule and the fact these performances have broad appeal and educational value. We recognize that contributing to the communities where we, communities where we operate means a great deal to our employees as well. Our role as a summer festival sponsor last year was a huge hit with our employees, and as I mentioned earlier, many of us will be personally participating under the stars with our families. Finally, I know that working to maintain Portland's status as a family-friendly city is a priority for all of you, and that is a goal we all share. Once again, thank you very much for the opportunity to contribute and the recognition today, and I look forward to seeing you guys on the grass as well in Washington Park this coming month. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Nielsen, and this is really a splendid example of how the public and the private sectors can collaborate together, as you said, to implement family-friendly activities for the entire community. And I hope we can continue the tradition with you for, for many years to come in the future. So just to remind our viewing public and everybody, there are fifteen concerts at the Washington, as part of the Washington Park Summer Series, as well as forty other suburb concerts throughout the city, throughout Portland neighborhood parks, and all are free to the public. Now, back to you, Antonio, for closing.
It could be a hard one to top, but I have a feeling that a couple up from now are gonna be doing it, so.
That was your best presentation ever.
Well, thank you.
We have a 10:45 time cert, but we don't have, it's not 10:45, so we will go to the regular agenda. Please read the item 1018.
Authorize two agreements with Metro-Fi, Inc. to utilize the city right-of-way and facilities and to provide the goods and services required to implement a citywide broadband, high-speed wireless communication system.
The second reading, vote only, please call a roll.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, very pleased to go ahead with this. This is an exciting opportunity for Portland, both from an economic development point of view, but also in terms of giving all citizens access to the internet at no cost. So this is a great, exciting proposal. Look forward to it. Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Please read item 1021.
Require bureaus to assign a level of confidence rating to project cost estimates when presented to City Council.
Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. This is follow-up to a resolution that was passed by council at the request of yourself and my office to learn the appropriate lessons to be learned regarding issues related to the tram and the, the confidence of the information regarding cost estimates that the council should place on the variety of projects that we approve at a variety of stages in the process. Given the high volume of decision-making that we have to make here, we thought that it would be useful for our efforts at making good decisions and the public's efforts to try to track where a project is in terms of its development and in terms of how much confidence we should place on cost estimates at various points along its developments to actually put together a rating system that people that come before us as a city council and staff that comes before us as commissioners in charge would be able to communicate, and that it would be a standard rating system that would allow for us to develop a common language across the far-flung city bureaucracy. So Jeff and a group of folks have been working on coming up with an initial draft of standards, and we'll be presenting them today, and we'll continue to fine-tune them with experience. So Jeff, up front, I want to thank you very much for your work on this and the team of people that you had involved with it.
Thank you. Mayor Potter, members of City Council, I'm Jeff Baer, the Director of the Bureau of Purchases. And as Commissioner Adams alluded to, this was back in March, directed to pursue coming up with a rating index that you could be better informed at various stages along the project life. And you'll see the index as we came up with it, really tracks that at varying stages along the project estimate, and from a very low rating index where the project scope is very visionary or conceptual, and it's really at the infancy or development stage- really raises your level of rating in terms of conveying to the council what, how much due diligence has gone through and put into the project, and how much clear understanding of the whole project in its entirety really is at that optimal level. The other, we also added a completion which really is designed to gauge our attempt at rating and also to come back to you to let you know that here's what we did, here's what we assigned as a rating index along the line, and then here's what we know at the end of that project life, so that we can come back and say, what, what did we learn, and sort of grade ourselves from a project management perspective. So with that, I'll stop. We did, well, let me add one more thing. We looked at a number of different areas from the Port of Portland ODOT, NASA on project rating indexes to come up with a scheme. Some of them have very elaborate ones that go through quite in detail, and this chart, I think, reflects a very straightforward, easy-to-understand for the public to know where we're at when we assign a different rating level. So I'll stop there and address any questions you might have.
Questions from the Commissioners. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Well done. Do we have a sign-up sheet on this?
We did, and no one signed up.
I need to move the substitute unless there's objection.
Okay. Please do so.
I move the substitute for Exhibit 8 to the one I passed out. Do you have a copy, Carl?
Just passing out. I have extras.
I hear a second.
I have a second.
Please call a vote. This is on the substitute.
Adams?
The change was simply to add the words "engineering" in the, unique to the transportation, construction, project management. There's a design phase and then an engineering phase, so we wanted to be clear about that. Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Salzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Now, on the resolution itself.
Adams?
Just a final thanks to you, Mr. Mayor, for partnering with my office on this, and again, to your great team in purchasing. Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Salzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Now, on the resolution itself.
Adams?
Just a final thanks to you, Mr. Mayor, for partnering with my office on this, and again, to your great team in purchasing. Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Salzman?
Well, I want to thank Commissioner Adams and Mayor Potter. I think this is a really nice tool that all bureaus can use and the City Council can use to unify around better decision-making on important capital projects. I think this gives us a great tool to do that. Aye.
Potter?
I too appreciate Commissioner Adams' leadership on this. I think it's a good way for the council, for the bureaus to give council a heads-up when there's something coming before a council that has financial implications and other kinds of implications, to have this kind of tool for us to use. And I appreciate the work of Jeff and his folks and Commissioner Adams' office. Vote aye.
And I forgot to thank Brian Hockaday on my staff for all his good work on this.
Please read item 1022.
Update purchasing code to conform to new state law and make technical corrections.
This is a second reading vote only. Please call a vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Salzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Please read item 1023.
Authorize change in the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Number R74165 to reflect 20-year term begins on the date of first payment and increased loan amount.
Second reading vote only. Please call a roll.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Salzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Sean, we've already gone through the consent agenda, and your item was passed. Thanks for being here. You only have to stick around if you're really interested.
Before calling to question his judgment.
Please read the 10:45 time cert.
Refer amendments to the City of Portland Charter, Chapter 5, Fire and Police Disability, Retirement, and Death Benefit Plan to the November 2006 general election ballot.
Commissioner Salzman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Today, we consider referring reforms to the fire and police disability and retirement system for voter approval in the November elections. The resolution we have before us today embodies the work of independent citizens, representatives from the police and fire bureaus, city staff, and the city council. A year and a half ago, the city council started down the path to reforming the fire and police disability and retirement system. In February 2005, council created the Independent Review Committee, or IRC, to oversee a comprehensive analysis of the fire, police, disability, and retirement system. In January of this year, the council created the Reform Committee to propose substantial and comprehensive reforms to the system. The reforms before council today are both fiscally responsible to the taxpayers and are fair to our public safety officers. In essence, the reforms ensure independent audits of the system will be conducted. The reforms also ensure a fair disability system, a system overseen by independent disability experts, a system that will not be abused. As well, if the voters approve of these changes, we will improve the financial health of our city. The city currently faces a $1.64 billion unfunded property tax liability. If we do not correct this problem, we will leave our children and our grandchildren the legacy of an $8 billion unfunded debt. This threat to the city's financial well-being, the unfunded property tax liability, has been studied seven times. The first report was a 1982 City Club report. With our action today, the voters, for the first time in nearly 24 years, will have an opportunity to weigh in. The reforms we will ask voters to approve in November corrects this looming unfunded liability problem by moving all new police and firefighter, all new police and firefighters into the funded Oregon State Public Service Retirement System. Equally important, the reforms to the disability system are significant and sweeping. As the Independent Citizens Committee indicated, the major problem with the current system is that disability experts do not make decisions in claims. Instead, a board controlled by beneficiaries of the system have been making decisions on disability claims. For the public to have confidence in this system and our city, independent experts in disability matters must make claims decisions, and the system cannot be controlled by beneficiaries of the system. The reforms before us today ensure the use of neutral and independent experts to make claims decisions. In addition, these reforms bring the fire, police, disability, and retirement system into the existing structure at the city, ensuring more oversight by city council, oversight that is sorely needed. The final piece of the resolution is to guarantee that the city will provide greater accountability to the taxpayers regarding the fire, police, disability, and retirement system. An initial audit of the system will be conducted within nine months to allow the city to monitor and measure the system for success, as well as to provide guidance to improve the system. The public deserves a chance to vote on these reforms in November to reform the system and ensure that we do not leave a legacy of debt to our children. Before we begin, I do want to offer a substitute to this resolution. It contains minor wordsmithing changes from our city attorney's office, so I would move the substitute.
Second.
Thanks. Moved and seconded. And I just wanted to add that the city attorney and Shannon Callahan from my office are available to answer any questions council may have regarding the substitute.
What was the substitute, again?
It's basically minor wordsmithing changes from the earlier version.
Okay, good. Please call a vote, Carla.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Salzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
So we're now open for testimony unless council has questions.
Was there a sign-up sheet for this?
Yes, we have Eva Schwaber.
Ms. Schwaber, who are you with?
City Club.
Good, okay.
Eva Schwaber, City Club of Portland, Mayor Potter, Commissioner Salzman, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Leonard. As a representative of City Club, of City Club of Portland, we are pleased to be here as you vote, as you just voted on proposed charter changes that will restructure Portland's antiquated fire, police, disability, and retirement fund system. By referring FPDNR reform to the November ballot, you will be giving voters the opportunity to address a $1.64 billion liability before it becomes an $8.4 billion liability. As you know, the greatest hurdle is yet to come. Convincing voters that this package of reforms is not only in the best interest of the city, but is also of significant consequence, will not be easy. It will require the active support of you, our elected, of you, our elected officials, stakeholder groups, namely the fire and police unions, continued reporting and commentary by local media, and visible support from civic organizations such as the Portland Business Alliance and the City Club of Portland. In January of this year, City Club made a commitment to educate others about the need for FPDNR reform. Pending adoption of today's package, which has just happened, package of reforms and authorization from City Club's Board of Governors, we expect to be active participants in your voter education process. I would like to thank you for your ongoing leadership and commitment to FPDNR reform. Your leadership has brought constituencies from a broad range of interests and concerns together to work for the greater, greater good of Portland's long-term fiscal sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's all who signed up.
Please call a vote.
Adams?
Well, I want to thank Commissioner Salzman for his dogged leadership on this issue as well, his staff, the mayor, and his staff for perseverance, our legal shop, financial shop, Judy, whichever shop you work for, I'm not sure, the Judy Tuttle Shop. I want to also thank Mary Jo Markle, who's now helping reconstruct Mississippi, but is going to be interested in this, and also Brian Hockaday on my staff who, over there, who's worked hard on this in the last couple of months. I look forward to helping campaign for this. I think it's an important reform. It reflects, I think, excellent progress. It takes care of many of the concerns, and it does so in a way that keeps as much support together as possible. So I'm pleased to vote, vote aye.
Leonard?
The easiest way to have submarine this attempt when it first began would have been sit back and say nothing and allow what was occurring to roll itself out, because what would have happened at the end of the day is the voters who have to pass final judgment are not going to do something they feel is a unfair judgment upon their city's police and firefighters. And I know that from a lot of experience. I am pleased that didn't happen, that people that were concerned about the various issues raised in the fire and police disability and retirement system saw the need to work together, to create a coalition, to keep everybody on board, where people tried to get off-board, sit down with them, talk that through, figure out what was causing them concern, address it, and move on to the next stage. One does not have to have been a firefighter or a police officer to appreciate the work that they do for the community. And this community makes that point often. The changes contained herein, I think, are fair and are balanced and will protect our police and firefighters in a way that they need to be protected when they are injured, when they are killed. It will still provide, in my view, a reasonable level of benefits to their surviving families, and that will happen. And when they retire, will give them a reasonable retirement upon which to spend the years of their lives after they leave service. So in many ways, as difficult as this was for a lot of people, this was the easy part because we have to get the voters to vote yes for all of this work to make any difference at all. So having this unified front that we do now is very important. It is very important. It is important to the voters, and it is important to our police and firefighters. Each of us here needs to be very involved in the upcoming campaign. Some of us here, however, given our prior lives, have a responsibility to be probably even more involved and more vocal and more visible about the need for the voters to vote yes. I assume some of that responsibility with this package today and understand that it's part of what is important for the long-term viability of this city. And I, Commissioner Salzman and I have already begun meeting and talking about our joint efforts to do what's necessary to win this very important charter change in November. So it wasn't always pretty, but getting here, but Dan and I discovered new sides of each other, which I think enhanced our friendship, to the surprise, I think, of a lot of people. But, you know, when I would think he was being a little hard-headed, I'd look in the mirror and realize he probably had a good argument to say I was being the same way. And, and I think out of that, though, came a very healthy debate and a very healthy product that we are voting on here today, and I'm pleased to vote aye.
Salzman?
Well, these reforms, which I hope voters will approve, are fiscally responsible to the taxpayers and fair to our public safety officers. I'd like to thank all those who have worked very hard over the last year and a half to bring these reforms to where they are on the verge of going to the ballot. City staff, council staff, members of the Independent Review Committee, members of the Fire, Police, Disability, and Retirement System Board of Trustees, City Club representatives, and members of the police and fire associations, as well as the Portland Police Commanding Officers Association. Thank you all for your hard work and input as this process has moved along. And I'd also like to thank my fellow Commissioners and especially Mayor Tom Potter for his leadership on this important reform. And finally, two people who deserve Medals of Honor, Shannon Callahan from my office and Austin Raglione from the mayor's office. They've gone above and beyond the call of duty to get us to where we are today. Thank you both. Aye.
Potter?
Ditto. I think this has been a tremendous effort. I think six months ago, probably if you were a betting person that we would come to an agreement on this and have all the different parties in line with this, not too many people would have bet on that. But it happened, and I think what it demonstrates is when good folks come together, we can make good progress in improving the lives of our citizens, of our public safety people as well. So I also want to thank our two unions, the police and fire union. They stayed with this process the entire way. They made an early commitment to be constructive and work together, and I think they did that. And now we look forward to working with them on the next stage, which is to take this campaign out to the voters so that they understand the significance of what this does, not to this, just to this generation, but to future generations in Portland. This particular change, I believe, will add stability to Portland for decades to come, financial stability, stability for our police and fire. So Shannon, thank you. Austin Raglione from my office, thank you. I can't help but note, but today is Austin's birthday. Happy 39th birthday, Austin. And I think this is a great present for you because you work so hard to make it all happen. And finally, to Commissioner Salzman, without his leadership and perseverance...